To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take this call order roll call starting on my right.
Counselperson Josh Aron.
Counselperson Brent Byer.
Mayor Jimmy John Kane.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Legend.
Um, let's jump to approval of agenda because we're gonna probably. So while we'll take off.
That's not on there.
We ended up, we ended up getting it off. Yeah.
Got a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed that carries approval of minutes of regular meeting of July ninth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, second discussion. Hearing now on favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, that's approved, that takes us to financing budget, we've got some compensatable with the additional listing there. Any questions direct them to Minister Schimmel.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Questions? Hearing now on favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. That carries update is ready to motions and general business and the first item under general business this evening will be a public hearing. Abatement of one oh three twentieth street northeast. Roger Angholm has been notified that he's in violation of ordinance thirteen fifty point oh five. The description of the violation is the accumulation of prohibited, prohibited items including construction materials, motor vehicle parts, tires, and applications not properly stored or located in a building. Deputy Straylo issued a citation for violation of public nuisance on June sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. Clerk Grader called Angholm on Monday, July fifteenth to see if he would come in to meet with staff, resolve the issue or set a timeframe of when they had to be removed. He so declined. A public hearing will be held at this time to determine whether or not a violation has occurred to direct the abatement of the property. If ordered, the city will hire a third party to remove the offending items. Angholm will be responsible for the costs of the abatement, including storage required for property removed, the city's administrative costs, attorney's fees. These amounts will be assessed to the property and will be paid with the property taxes. I'm gonna close the regular meeting now and go open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Roger, would you like to say anything or stand up or? You have nothing to say?
I'll wait.
Okay, does anyone else have anything to say? Any written comments coming in? Counsel have questions for Roger?
So what's the plan for the property?
Um, well, I want to open up a store. And you guys denied me. Uh, for no real reason. And so, uh, you know, the, the store has the ability to do probably a hundred thousand dollars a month. So that's what I would be suing you for.
But we were pretty clear last time that we denied it because you were so vague. I even talked to you after the meeting and you said, no problem, I'll work with you. I want to share all the details with you, I want to be a good member of the city and I want to be a kid on board on the same page. It's right on the parking lot.
Yeah.
Well, you're still vague.
Did you, yeah, I'm not vague, I got pictures.
I want to open a store.
I got pictures of, uh, all the stuff hidden by.
So when they asked you if you wanted to speak, we're here to consider whether or not you should have to pay for this abatement and have items cleaned up on your property. If I don't hear anything from you, how do I know, have any clue that you have a plan? I mean, I appreciate the answer, councilmember Art's question, but wouldn't it be appropriate for you now if you've got pictures and all this to take the podium and give us an idea so at least, at least I can make an educated vote?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, but I don't want to get the pictures off you.
Well, I don't, yeah.
And what is, what is this showing on?
This is showing you the property, showing you inside the property, outside the property.
So they, they've seen that, have you seen that?
No.
Is it, is it new pictures from the last one that we saw?
We already did take this.
New pictures since?
Just now.
Just now?
Yeah.
And is it the, um?
Inside and outside.
Okay, but right now for the outside, because we're giving you some flexibility on the inside, but it's the outside where the zoning allows just for the trucks, trailer type items, not the variety that are beyond that. And, and it's just, it's in that zone, we allow those things, but in different zones. And since you brought that all in without checking first, we could have worked with you ahead of time, um, just to let you know that. And like I said, in that zone, the trucks you have there, if they're operable, they can be available for sale, those are okay. The trailers, same way, it's just the variety of this other, these other items.
There isn't that much of a variety on this thing, it's just. And there's some things that just don't put kids back, you know what I mean? You got twenty foot, uh, siding.
You gotta kind of talk to them.
Yeah.
Now, we don't want to have that considered.
Why don't you show them these and then?
Yeah, what classes are on, they look at it quicker as you go.
You got twenty, thirty foot siding that many people would love to have, I can spell it, but you can't put that inside, it's a dick, all through. Um, I did get a ticket for, uh, I did get a ticket for, um, public nuisance, right?
For what?
Isn't that what I got to do, for public nuisance? Yeah? And, uh, that's what this is all about. And I pled and I'm guilty, so that sounds to me like that would be in the jurors' hands at that point in time. It's up to them whether it is or it is not, uh, offense.
I believe that ticket would be in the jurors' hand, but the abatement is still in our cause. Now, you can, you can help us out by just moving a bunch of this stuff, get it out of there, you know, and yeah.
Yeah, I think you have.
You know, you can take it back up to your property roster or whatever.
When I came here the first place, all you guys did was slap me in the face. You had, I mean, you look at the minutes and you'll find out, you guys just slapped me in the face, all you did, you know? Um, you didn't want to work with me.
Didn't, didn't it come off me and I, this is blowing my mind now that it's, you took it so different. You said we don't want to have a junkyard, nor do we have, want to have a drop post for a different junkyard, where this would be a spot where people can make those transactions. We denied you to put up a big tall fence to shield whatever you kept in there, because in our opinion, that didn't zone for that area. In my, I would think that if you have a store and you're trying to attract business and you want to sell goods, I don't see Fairway putting a ten foot wall up around their building to attract nobody to come by.
Yeah.
That doesn't make sense to me.
You want to do that to keep things from getting stolen.
I get some of that, if you had a secure zone, I get it, but at the time, nobody was against you and, and had you have felt like that way, I would have certainly thought you'd bring it up to me afterwards. I mean, I made time to walk over to you, to introduce myself to you, I had no idea you were even here that night, because I, I didn't know who you were. And that, so I introduced myself afterwards and, and to your business partner, and we had a good conversation. Now you come back and you see things completely different. So I, I'm confused, I don't know if we can't put things clear enough for you, or if you're just gonna misconstrue whatever we come up with. But to say that we were aiming for you last time, I'm not against you having a successful business, there's nothing I would want more for our community than, than for somebody to succeed. I don't need that building to sit vacant. But the last meeting, you know, there, we had a bunch of letters from people that live in the neighborhood that did not like driving by it, they didn't want that in their neighborhood, and it was offensive to them. And it didn't, wasn't zoned for it, so it was pretty clear, please clean that stuff up. You said you wouldn't have a problem doing that, and you said that it would not be anywhere related to be in any form of a junkyard or similar property. You made that clear as well. So now, so I, I don't know where, what you're, we're missing here then. I think we're willing to work with you, I don't care to see you get fined necessarily on anything, but if you've got a really good plan set up, number one, I would think you would have taken the invitation to come in here and speak with Cheryl or Bill and try to get it lined up ahead of time. Because the last thing we need is to be sitting here on a Tuesday night when it's eighty and sunny going over this stuff. You know, I mean, there's times that we can get this straightened out. I, for one, am a vote in your favor, if you want to continue to work and try and get things worked out, I'm all for it. But let's, let's start working.
How about anybody else? Are we all, all for it, you know?
It depends on what it is, it.
I have a plan, I have a plan, I have a selling yard in Hayfield that I'm starting, that has nothing to do with this place whatsoever.
No, Roger, the other day you told me on the phone that you were going to put a church in there, that's that.
Do you want anything else here? Yeah? Need a full church here?
No, but I would imagine, Roger, if you're putting a church there, you're not gonna leave all that stuff sitting there on the church.
Right, it has to be sold. So I have a bunch of options before.
I was under the impression last time you were here, you were gonna start cleaning up the outside.
I was yet, under the impression that you were really not liking me at all, that's my impression of us.
I never came across that impression, I asked you because I know, we get calls and stop the grocery store and emails from citizens wondering what's going on there, and I asked you what was going on there. And we still don't have a viable answer about what you want to do there, what kind of store you want, everything is.
I told you. And you denied it?
We all denied it.
Right.
Well, Roger, you told us your store was called Buy Sell Trade.
That's right.
And you couldn't tell us what you were gonna buy, sell, trade?
I've got a million things. You want to see the pictures, now I can show you the pictures. Are you get the pictures?
No, I couldn't do it, I don't, I don't have that digital phone.
I really have to show you the pictures.
Take it up to that.
Yeah, is it, is it different pictures than we saw last time?
Yeah.
So you have removed some of the stuff that was found.
This, this is the inside, outside pictures. So you can just scroll through there.
Okay, that's the front. Is this all over the front or is this the rear?
That's the side.
There's a picture of a bunch of eighty people in here, will you wear that?
Yeah, that's.
I'm gonna get the front of it. You've, uh, so if we were to bring up those pictures we had last time, all that stuff is now removed, is that what you're saying?
I think last time we mentioned with the buy, sell, trade thing too, that, again, that was extremely vague and, you know, I mean, if you came in and said, yeah, I want to do a car lot. You know, we've already proven that we're pretty open to that, we've approved a couple other people to do that. When we asked you, you know, of course, there's no answer because you didn't talk in the meeting, but even afterwards.
Well, it's gonna be more than a car lot.
If you could narrow it down, you know, it's gonna be what?
It's gonna be more than a car lot.
Well, that's what I was saying, is that if you could, like even, do you feel like you've been really clear tonight even? I mean, I honestly, I don't.
I mean, I can't.
I can't figure it out, like if you just want to have a spot where if you acquire anything, it's gonna be out there for people to look at to get rid of? That's, to me, it's not really a focused store, I mean, if I was a banker, would I be giving you a loan on that? I'd like to see a business plan, I mean, I'm not saying I need to see it, I don't need to get that detailed, but this is on our main, main thread coming into town, I mean, this is a pretty important piece of crap.
I can explain to you, okay, I have, uh, lots of, uh, restaurant equipment. Uh, I got, uh, I'll, I'll be giving, uh, ice cream away free. I have lots of wood materials, uh, tabletops, walnut tops, all that kind of stuff.
Well, that's inside the store, correct?
Exactly. But you wanted to know so I could open up the store, is what I'm saying.
We understand that, Roger, we understand you tell us what's in the store, what we're talking about, it was totally visible to everybody that drives by, walks by, drives into the community. You have some materials out there that are questionable.
I know.
I understand to you, they're not, they're part of your business, but to the rest of this community, you're questioning it. It looks more like you just got piles of stuff that needs to be gone. When you've got bundles of half a shingles, and you got some siding piled here, another color piled here, it's kind of a collection of everything. And that's, I understand, that's what you're calling your buy, sell, trade. But that's what we're talking about. The trucks and stuff that show us the pictures that you got lined up and rolls in front, nothing offensive about that. Now, some of the ones that are in parts and pieces in the back, maybe, but it's other stuff in between. If that's what we've been talking about, if that's what the pictures were last time, I, like Craig said, I don't know, we're not looking at the same thing, if we're not on the same wavelength here, or what, that's. The inside stuff, I'm sure you have some fine stuff in there. May I ask you if you're, are you with Roger here?
Roger asked me to, uh, come, I'm with Ross Commercial Real Estate and, and I think what Roger, what I, you know, like to talk to Roger about is that, um, the way it sounds, you guys are, you don't care what's inside the building as long as it's functional, legal something, it's the outside. And that's where Roger needs, I, I called, uh, on my way here and, uh, I think Roger really needs to have some time to talk to, uh, he uses Dave Peterson at Dunlop City, I talked to Dave on the way here. He needs to fully understand that the city does have some say in what's outside and how it is. And I talked to Dave and I said, you know, I, I like Roger dearly, he's a client of mine, but there are some issues with what is out. And then, you know, my, my thought for Roger is, you know, I would let you find out what those items are and, uh, accommodate the inside the best you can. And I think we might be able to get some, get that through Roger, but I couldn't do it at six thirty and I put his attorney on the phone, his attorney said the same thing, you know, tell Roger that this is something that they do have control over, they do have a say in, so. I think for Roger, he, he maybe is feeling a little bit ganged up on, and I, I don't get that impression, I think you guys are wanting nicely in community, and I think that you guys are looking to have it so he succeeds and people aren't calling you guys and complaining and there's just gotta be a way to, they, they know that a lot of money is spent on the building and there's gotta be a way that maybe some things are stuck inside, other things that obviously are even what the previous business had, trucks and trailers and things like that, as long as they're not broken down and they're for sale, or even a car lot, I'm on your side, so I don't think I'm not, I'm trying to be a little bit in between to help.
Yeah, and this is the wavelength we're trying to be on, Roger, this is what we're trying to be, we, we, no matter if you agree with us or not, we do have a say somewhat in what goes on out there.
Okay, how about if we, you know, the area in, the, I need a spot for some outside stuff. They're just, I mean, you know, you got metal sheeting, you have, uh, different things that I can sell and that people want, so it's gonna be an asset to everybody. If it was fenced off, they can't see it, it's not, it doesn't have to be the big area that I talked about before.
One thing you still gotta understand, Roger, is there's certain zones for certain things for like what you're talking about. This isn't one of those zones for what you're talking about, that's what we're trying to get across to you.
What I don't understand is Bobcat has stuff everywhere. And, and now I buy the place and it's like, you know, that's it, you know?
No, Bobcat did.
They had Bobcat products that they were selling.
Bobcat did have bundles of shingles and parts of siding and street lights laying there and stuff like that. Now, that, that's the kind of things we're talking, we're not talking about your trucks, we're not talking about your tree service, we're not talking about your workers. Those things are manageable and look like most of them are well maintained. But some of the other things, it's just not the correct zone for those things.
Okay. So if I move that stuff out there, am I getting it, the conditional use permit then, or, or would that?
We still, Roger, there's the hard part, we seem that we have a trouble with, we need to know what your business is. Buy, sell, trade is.
That's what I gave you.
I, I understand that's what you do, you've done it for years, I understand that. It's not something you can particularly zone anywhere, and that's why you're having a problem, you are. I think if you'd said, it's Roger's buy, sell, trade, truck rodeo, that's one thing. Roger's buy, sell, trade, restaurant equipment.
Is, is there a, is there a way that, um, we could table what a possible action, uh, remediation, you guys remedy that you guys could impose on Roger, which would be pretty rough? Is there a way to table that and I take Roger back, sit with his attorney and, and have Roger come up with a, not a legal plan, he needs to come up with a business plan to present to you guys that's really spelled out, really specific, so that, I mean, and part of the reason why they would want that, Roger, is so that if you didn't comply, it would be so specific that they could say that this is not part of that plan, right, so I know that's, you know, is there a way to?
I would be open to some of that, but it sounds like we're either gonna have you or Roger's attorney with Roger when we discuss this.
I'd like to get Roger with his attorney to explain to him that, that this is a real process that can happen to him. I think there might be some idea that, that you guys can't do that, well, you can and they will, and, and, um, that's what I want Roger to understand, that that's a real possibility, so the city starts to flex its muscle. I think if we had a chance to, I really truly don't believe Roger wants to buck the city, I think he needs to get a little bit of help from a guideline perspective and be specific about a plan. I think we're pretty, I'm pretty clear on what can be out there from what you say, and, uh, in my mind, that's the only, I mean, the only way that it's not gonna be some type of.
We can't be totally clear, sir, on what can be out there until we face the role of business.
Absolutely.
We just need to know, and I, I'll be honest with you again here, I'm, when we get out of this public hearing, I'm all for making a motion to buy him some time, pushing it down the road, you know, a meeting or two, that's no problem. And I do not, I don't want, um, you to have the idea that I'm asking, that I need every single detail. I don't, I mean, you, you're an entrepreneur, I, I get that, and not, but we would need, just like a banker would need, we need an idea, we need to know that your plan is gonna fit in to what's allowed in our city. Because everybody that lives around there, everybody that drives through town has got the same expectation. The ordinances are in place for a reason, people need to follow them for a reason, you know, and we all want to work together.
Is there any, any of you that can come over to my place and work with me and help me figure out what I should have there, or what, you know what I mean?
My, my vice versa would be, ask questions to Cheryl, because she knows every bit of what's allowed and zoned more than I do. And if you have trouble approaching her with it, put it on paper and I'll, I'll be glad to be an intermediate, however it may be. Just the big thing, I mean, it, that's all it is, really, just gotta make sure that it follows, that it fits in one zone there. And we want, again, let's work together so that you can make some money and we can be happy as a community. Everybody gets nervous when somebody, you know, when that big business sat vacant forever, you know, I mean, it used to be a grocery store, it was a popular place, and then it sits vacant, and that doesn't look good either, nobody likes vacant properties, and that wasn't the only one. I think it's great that you stepped up, took a big risk and bought it. So I, I think we'll be able to work something out, it can't be that hard, right, it's not rocket science. Clearly, you're smart enough to be back, be successful in these other angles, so. Rather, I don't think it does us any good though to have an adversarial view of each other, that's just dumb, you know, because flexing the city's muscles is the last thing that I want any part of, and, you know, it's no fun to, for you having to run to your attorney and try to figure out a way to beat a, to bait a ticket, you know, it's just, not worth any of our business, so. If that were, go ahead.
I can suggest if you're leaning towards that, you could table it for thirty days, or you could table it until the August twenty.
Two meetings or no, right?
August, no, because that's gonna be our public hearing on C I P, so that'll take.
Oh, okay.
So do it for this second meeting in August, which is August twenty seven. But in the meantime, within like ten days, if he would have his attorney send us a letter so that we know that he has at least taken that step.
Let me.
He, I truly, the, hopefully you guys don't take wrong when people say, well, I want to talk to my attorney, I, I really truly think Roger needs his attorney to explain to him, this is the process. These are the things that can happen, that's what I want him to sit with his attorney, not about can this happen or that happen, just fully understanding the what's, why's, and how's. That's more of a retail area up there, this is not on the west or east side of town, hidden, it's right when you drive in, that's something that, you know, Roger and I need to talk about and, and, uh, it sounds to me like people are not against Roger leaving the business there, that's something I think Roger may have thought, you're against me, I don't give that vibe. You gotta find out what can be allowed and, and then roll with it and make it go, and, and some of those items just may need to be inside there.
Or gone or something.
Or gone or sold or at another site, but there's plenty of stuff that can be sold there, maybe just not some of those items that these guys are getting hassled by the community.
So if we can do that, if we can hear from his attorney in ten days, you said?
Yeah.
With kind of a, you kind of need to know, Roger, what the business is. Now, I know that we're having a hard time getting across to each other on that, but you kind of need to tell us, you need to figure out what that area is zoned for, so you know what business fits in there and what you can and can't do in there.
What is highway commercial, right?
Me too, highway commercial.
But there's certain things that still fit in highway commercial, that fit and don't fit, so. Anyhow, if you can take them steps.
Yeah. I appreciate it.
We'd, any other questions for Roger, any discussion or anything from the audience, anyone else?
May I just make a suggestion, can I do that?
You can do what?
Make a suggestion?
Sure.
I, I mean, just for you, Rogers, maybe go around and look for businesses that are similar to the kind of business that you want to start and look and see how they present themselves in this community. How are they, um, you know, placing their items outside, what kind of things are they using to hold those items? Um, different things like that to maybe give you a picture that you can present to them of what you have in your mind, um, and maybe use them as to.
Well, it definitely wouldn't be the way I have it right now, because we just kind of moved from one spot to another spot and we pretty much had to. It's, it's not organized at all, I, I, I agree with that.
But they, one thing to remember is, um, these guys sitting here, they don't know that, they just have nightmare things going through their heads, and I think if you give them a plan, it's really labeled out, they can buy an item veto, this, that's not gonna work, this is gonna work, at the end of the day, if everybody's got a smile on their face, everybody's okay.
All right. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing, open the regular meeting back up, all right, we need some council action on this.
I'll make a motion to push this thirty days down the road. Do we have to say anything about the ten days, talking to his attorney? And that, uh, that we request that his attorney contact us within ten days and start some discussion here so we have a clearer picture of what's going on, what the plan is.
Yeah.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion, any questions? Hearing so, on favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. That carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are you welcome to stay or are you welcome?
No, I'm good, thank you, thank you very much.
That seems weird, that happens a lot. I just gotta feel like it's gonna happen again here.
Thanks for having me, first.
All right.
Me too.
Me too, me too. Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, next item under general business will be the tree committee update. As per council directions, several residents and professional tree experts have formed a tree committee to discuss bollard trees and have held their first meeting. Representatives will be attending the meeting to update the council on information they have gathered and announced. on information they have gathered, and asked that a formal committee be formed. So, and we got a designated person that wants to talk for a couple minutes.
Sure. Hannah Lekner, eight three eight H Boulevard, seven eight. Thank you, council members, and thank you to the Storerville Boulevard Tree Committee for appointing me to speak tonight. Before I begin, I want to acknowledge, I'm really happy with how the process has gone, or is going, at least now, in terms of citizens and city and officials working together to kinda come up with plans, and to look at the multi-sided, multivariable issues, and kinda solve the problems as a group. That's what we're all here for. So, I just, you guys have your packet, I guess, with boulevard tree. We did some research, councilperson Anderson had asked for thirty more cities to look at.
You need to come to more meetings, by the way, that did pop out at me. And in five years, I think I've proven I got a little bit of sarcasm on my side. It's great that you got thirty, but honestly, ten would suffice. I wanted more than one.
It was there, it was there. I didn't watch the video, I wasn't able to count. But, so, just addressing sort of the situation for anybody that isn't aware is the letter that was sent out, of course, you guys are aware of that, and you've rescinded since the, sort of the verbiage in there, but I think there are sort of two paths. One is the Emerald Ash Board Plan, or Phase Out Plan, or whatever we might call that. And then there's sort of the Ordinance six zero zero point zero three, which right now it's unlawful to plant boulevard trees in the city of Storerville. So, we did do some research in terms of Georgetown Meadows has one hundred and sixty-seven ash trees. Peterson Division has thirty-eight. We also in Georgetown have thirty-four maple. Peterson has one crab and one maple. So, basically, if we did do the original plan and just wipe them all out, we would prematurely lose two hundred trees that we feel we really need as long as possible. So, we did wanna talk about the Ordinance six zero zero point zero three. It was continuously referenced at the six twenty-five meeting, and this amendment passed five twenty-four sixteen, which was also discussed. But the minutes of that meeting and the circle star article do reflect that more than one citizen expressed support for boulevard trees, referencing councilperson Tim's comments in the addition of the two sets and the beaches who were in person, and Mr. Todd Weston's email to city administrator Schimmel. But the council did not ask for citizen input, or through survey, or community forum on a law change that we feel affects many, if not most, of the town, as well as future generations, using their paper, so nicely. The ordinance, as mentioned, was communicated in the paper, and, you know, also it's listed in chapter six under nuisances and offenses. So, we just kinda overall feel like we need to take a look at this. It seems, it seems that that was maybe done without consulting tree experts, without looking at the whole picture, and maybe not. But I couldn't find any evidence that there were people on the committee that were arborists, or landscape designers, or things like that. So, we did do our thirty comparables, you'll see that we do have our committee that's made up of two arborists, a landscape architect, and nine citizens of Storerville. We found thirty-three that support boulevard trees, and we found actually zero that have language like Storerville has. We tried to look really hard on the other side, to say, who does not allow boulevard trees? And we truly couldn't find one. Maybe they exist. To just quickly reference a groundwork study that Mickey Kusad referenced in her last proposal to council, was the groundwork study that was done in Rochester for our neighbors, talking about the benefits of boulevard trees specifically, because councilperson Anderson needed, asked for that as well. We talked about now our group, the enhancement of property values, energy savings, many health benefits, including mental comfort and traffic safety, aesthetic values, that was discussed last time, the reduction of noise and glare, air pollution reduction, and protection of water quality, enhancing stormwater control. In fact, something that I learned through this process, and I can almost get my master's in arborist at this point, was this two thousand and five study down in Minneapolis to show that an average street tree can absorb fifteen hundred gallons of stormwater per year, and per event, per rainstorm event, fifty to a hundred gallons of water goes during that event. So, if we lose two hundred trees, we will be also effectively losing twenty thousand gallons to our storm sewers, which could also flood basements. So, we're just trying to make the point that just because perhaps roots can get into the storm sewers and the drain tiles, which they have, but we also, when we talk to Public Works Director Hale, it seems like two or three per year. We can't get an actual number on how often that's happening, and if it's actual boulevard trees that are doing that, and if it's boulevard trees, if those are properly planted and placed. So, those are some of the groundwork or background studies that we did. We also, like I said, we have Michael Blazin, who's a thirty-year resident of Storerville on our committee, and he is neither in Peterson or Georgetown. He's a landscape architect for Sargent's, and he works in civil engineering and landscape design, and has done that for twelve years. And he works with the city of Rochester's boulevard tree planting guidelines. He also gave us a lot of tree options, that where the root mass only goes twelve to sixteen inches deep, which wouldn't effectively hurt our drain tile, which is four feet in Peterson, twelve feet deep in Georgetown. There was some discussion about treating everyone equally last time, at least at the June twenty-fifth meeting, and I think we need to think more about equity than equality. I think every situation is different, every tree is different, the roads are different. Some people have twelve-foot boulevards, some people have one foot, some people have none. So, I think part of our proposal is coming back with a plan that would outline those things, create guidelines around which trees can be planted, if we have a permit process, and just, you know, how that all might work, and that we don't have yet.
Can I stop here, Diana?
Yes.
We've already agreed to take a look at the ordinance, which you've assisted.
Okay.
We're agreeing to form a committee, which we asked you. I've read through most of your packets, I even picked out some stuff I would like to use on the packets to form the committee. You wanna form a official committee, I'd like to give you my suggestion of who I'd like to see on that committee. I'd like to see two citizens, two concerned citizens, you know? I don't want both from Georgetown, and both from Peterson, like you said, have nothing somewhere else.
Yeah, we have nine, and those are covered.
No, we can't get nothing, the only thing, Anna, you get a committee of thirty people, you get nothing done.
No, but I have a committee of twelve, and we've gotten a lot done, and we're...
Here's what you're gonna wanna do, if we're gonna form a committee. I want two citizens, I want two council members, I want Public Works Director Hale, I want a forestry man, I want one park board member out there, and I want you to always be in constant contact with people's call, because they have many rules that we have to follow, even though we may not like them, nobody. We have to do what they say. I'd like that committee to be formed, and I'd like for you guys meet, because we're not gonna vote on this tonight as far as making a decision.
I understand.
Okay? But I'd like you to have these good, hard discussions like you're having. Now, I'm not saying you can't, when your committee meets, if you wanna make it a public meeting, you can have other citizens there throwing out their input or whatever, but sometimes that gets out of hand, too. But I thought you also had a petition you wanted to give me tonight, or not?
It's in your packet, yep. It's the last three pages of your packet.
Okay, you're just gonna give me an email, or you're not gonna give me a written one, or?
No, it's all about trying.
Can you give me some addresses on someone, too? My bigger concern is, I know there's a lot of people out of the area that enjoy trees, too, and I know a couple of them on their person that don't live in the city of Storerville. The problem is, I'd like, you know, we gotta face the taxpayers on whatever decisions made on this deal, too, be it you or the other ones. So, as far as I like their input, I'd like to know they like trees, but...
This is a specific, too, if they sign their name, they're asking you to overturn or amend the amendments for six zero zero point zero three.
That's fine, but I can't go to High Forest Township and ask them to overturn ordinances, either. I don't, you have one from High Forest Township that I know for sure, you have one from Pleasant Grove Township for sure on that, they live out in the world.
Sure, but we, I, I can, I don't really wanna press consultants all these, but I can name at least one hundred that are from Storerville that I personally know.
I don't even think we need to, I mean, help them, if you ask for it, that's fine, but I don't wanna see us keep spinning our wheels. Everything that you said is the same things that we said at the last meeting, that we're, I'm a hundred percent...
We're agreeing with the look it up.
Boulevard trees, let's get it going. I love mine holds planned, I've taken down, because they're too close out there, and getting other ones planted now, so that it offsets when they do end up getting infested and come down. I'm all for anything, and the one thing that you really hit on, that I was hoping to hear from you guys, and that's where I've been troubled, is that it is so different boulevards within the city, and a lot of places that technically have a boulevard, but they don't have a sidewalk, or whatever it may be. Your guys' area, hands down, is the most perfect neighborhood ever to have boulevard trees. Unfortunately, they're planting too close together, and picked all the same kind that ended up getting in there, but this shouldn't be that monumental of a task at all. I think, we'll just, we just need, and pretty much all your, the research you did, I looked at a bunch of them, they all recommend pretty much the same trees in all these cities.
Especially these.
Yes, smaller or medium. It'll be interesting to see what, like Dave and everybody else come up with as far as whether we should go to the lengths of some of the barriers and all that stuff, because some are expensive and a waste, I think Dave believes they're a waste of money, right? So, go ahead, I can tell you.
No, yeah.
I can tell you get, you get a little amped up and look out for the corners.
Public Works Director brought that term in tension, in terms of the root maintenance systems, or the diversion systems, and the tree-forestry people that we have there said that would be a waste of resources.
So, and this is a good discussion for the committee to have, to hash out and bring back to us.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
So, what I'd like to do tonight is, if you'd agree to this committee the way it is, I'd like to appoint some people tonight, so we can get this committee started, so we can get looking at this project.
I think that's good. Would you agree that this is a project, so a firm start and a firm end date? Because I don't want this to be like a park board committee that just meets all the time. I'm not willing to volunteer for that, I think this is a...
I can't...
Submit the document, you guys vote.
I think, I think it's started as soon as possible. As far as the end date, that's up to the committee, what they can come up with, and it's gotta be a memo to everybody else, too, you know?
So, the end is, we submit a plan, and you guys vote on changing the ordinance? Are we submitting in the ordinance language, or are we submitting a management plan?
There's gonna be, how did we talk about that, Sean? Management plan with...
Urban tree development.
Urban tree development plan.
But, specific to boulevards, because honestly, I mean, all of us don't wanna be tree experts for all of Storerville.
The main thing we were addressing was boulevard trees.
Yes.
We didn't even necessarily want to get into ash trees, it was the boulevard trees, you guys were upset with them.
Agreed.
So, it would deal strictly with distances, certain tree frames are allowed, the width of the boulevard, so we would set all those, and we've looked at several of them, and they state each of them, they fluctuate a little bit, but they do state, just, there's a lot.
Yeah.
And it's a matter of just picking out one that we like, and we can agree on, that works for both sides.
Yep. Well, we don't wanna be, we just don't wanna rush. I agree, we need to get it done, it can't just sit and linger forever. But clearly, I was part of a vote for an ordinance that we didn't think through all the way through, and look at how that worked out. I don't wanna do that again. So, next time it's eighty and sunny, three years from now, or two years from now, I wanna be having a beer on the deck, so... You guys are doing excellent work, though, and you're gonna, you save your trees. I mean, at least from one vote, I'm only one, but I gotta figure out, you guys have been pretty influential, so I'm sure that'll get passed on to the rest of these guys. So, if we can agree on that, if that committee works for you, you can have other people come into your meetings, do whatever you want. It's just more functional if you have a smaller committee, when it comes time to, if we have to meet with anybody.
But here's my asking for staff, I'm asking, Hannah, because everyone's gonna have to manage this, after it's imposed.
Just like all the cities, I agree.
So, I need, I need the Public Works Director, and have you talked to Scott?
Scott Sundberg, he's a fellow community, he's our tree inspector.
We've had a, we've had a call from Jeff on the park board, he'd like to be on it.
All right.
So, we have our park board guy.
Okay.
Josh has volunteered, is it, who else up here wants to volunteer to be the council rep on that?
I'd do it.
Which one? Jeremiah? Have you got your two reps?
Okay. I think we got plenty of citizens, so if we got more than two, we'll find two.
We need two, but like I asked you, I'd like them, I'd like you, not only from Georgetown, not just from Georgetown.
We already have four that are non-Georgetown or Peterson.
I know. I'm curious, too, what you guys find, and this is something I don't know yet, because I haven't talked to anybody, but what are some of the different attitudes as far as taking responsibility for their trees? You know, I don't wanna, I, I'm not a big fan of having us dictate everything and put every dollar on the tax, you know, on the person doing it, but I'm also curious if there's a meeting point, I've read it in a couple of your ordinances, that some of the cities do do that.
Yeah, I mean, many of the cities, especially, because I know we were talking about the true budgets being more than our entire city budget, but Cassin has about two hundred people more than us, and they have a program called Model Tree Street Planting, and they pay for fifty percent of the planting of all boulevard trees, and their program is an effort by the city to get as many people as possible to plant boulevard trees. And then they also require new subdivisions to handle boulevard trees. So, they pay for fifty percent, that's an example, where I can't imagine their budget is much bigger than ours. I think what we also propose in our recommendations is to, if you guys will allow us...
The grants?
To use the city's tax ID to write grant applications.
Cities won't?
Whatever, the tax ID, or whatever, whatever five oh one C three or thing it is that you guys have, under our municipality versus an individual, so that we could submit for grants for, especially in the September thirtieth, Storerville Area Foundation, Community Foundation, they have a ten thousand dollar grant that I think we could go after. I think Peoples Co-op, as you mentioned, there's Peoples Minnesota Energy Resources, so there's potentially money, the D N R has some programs specific to ash border, but they still have some money that we can maybe use our phase-out plan. So, I think that's why we also need council representation, because frankly, we all have full ten jobs as well, so...
So, and I also want you folks to realize, we're gonna be talking about hazardous tree ordinance tonight, so some of this will fall into urban, boulevard trees.
It could, it could fall into the urban plan, but I would propose that it's not part of our boulevard management plan.
No, we'll, shout out to the committee.
I mean, that's a whole nother ballgame in terms of perks, and chemical runoff, and how you guys maintain things, and I just, I think we should stay as focused on the boulevard trees.
Well, I just want you to understand, it could fall into that category when the time comes, if something was, comes on a tree or something like that.
Okay.
The committee would focus on boulevard trees, but that could be included with as a discussion on other parts, as part of that whole tree plan.
The only other thing to mention is, at this time, our committee is requesting that the city of Storerville do not take down any boulevard trees unless it is infested, the forty percent reduction in canopy for ash border, because I, as I understand, some citizens are calling and saying, just take all my trees, I don't want my basement to flood, because now there's misinformation going around, saying if you have boulevard trees, apparently your basement's gonna flood. And I don't, I don't think the taxpayers' dollars should be spent cutting those trees down prematurely. Because it's about two hundred and twenty-five dollars per tree. The people I understand have called in have six to eight trees, it's two thousand dollars.
That's the decision that council has... But the ash trees, the ash trees, if they don't wanna pay to treat them, the city has decided we are not treating all boulevard ash trees. And the ones that are areas that are infested, we have like Georgetown, or Peterson, they're pretty much infested in that area. We kind of agreed that once they get to the forty percent tieback, we would take them.
Yeah.
And if homeowners request they wanna mount in front of their property, and they have an ash tree, I guess our attitude was, most towns and other towns I did speak to, were going in and just taking all ash trees, because people had decided. And that's kind of the feeling I've got, and ash trees, we all agreed, weren't a great boulevard tree in the first place, and I agree, buying time, but if they're not a good boulevard tree in the first place, because of their size of the root mass they get, and stuff like that, I think the ash trees should be an exception. If they are, we should get rid of the ash trees.
I don't, see, I don't think it's unreasonable to wait. If somebody calls and says, I just want them gone, we just say, sorry, it's the city, we're waiting until it gets to that point.
And that's your guys' decision, I'll support it.
No, I don't, that's what I'm saying, I don't think that's an unreasonable request at all, advise people to...
But if they get to a, if they get to a forty percent tieback, I think we agreed on the forty percent tieback, we are going to, we've already printed out the things that we will post on the tree, and give thirty-day notice for the homeowner to have their comment on it, and then there'd be a date put on there, and they can respond to us, and we will hold off that thirty days for sure. But our liability is, Mickey already saw her tree dipped over, and they are in city property, so we do have to protect the city if they are to the point where they are dangerous.
Yeah, I totally agree, if it's that, take them down, I think everybody would agree with that. But I, I'm not against that at all, we can wait and try to buy time on it.
I think we need to wait until we get, this committee comes up with a new replacement plan.
We were not planning on doing anything until we got some, you know, we put that out there, and they've already said, we're not going off cutting any of them down until we get more of a feeling of how this is going.
All right, Joe?
Just one quick question, because when we put that ordinance together three years ago, we were trying to eliminate some future maintenance, whether it was underground infrastructure or things we deal up above, like if we help people's energy with the lines and stuff. Was there any ideas that came out from the citizens of a willingness to help us with future maintenance as well, whether it's trimming, or different odds and ends, things like that? And I'll give you one example, we had a citizen just come in that does a lot of whacking, and they whacked in that area.
Yeah.
So, then their concern was, we ducked down a lot, who's supposed to take care of the trimming at at least a certain heights of the city, or is it a adjacent homeowner?
Well, as you read through a bunch of these that they've given us, that's mentioned in there.
Yeah, so that's what we'd like, everybody to consider.
There's several women talking about the homeowner takes care of it for severance, like a shared.
Yeah, it's their shared kind of future things, not just the initial planting, and then the homeowner's all done. It's how do we work together on some of that, too, so.
So, I guess the one thing we have to do is, and I can't speak for the Public Works Department or these guys, you gotta get together the date when you start meeting or whatever.
No problem.
You guys wanna do some?
We got together in a round of six days last night.
It's easy to say, we try to get this council, all of us kinda heard the cats sometimes.
And I think we've got to do a step forward
Yeah.
in a common direction that we are all in your team.
Do you feel that a hundred percent of those people are gonna be at every meeting, or can they send a representative or have a forum of four people or?
They're actually representing, not as I know, they'd like to have as many of them there as we can have.
I agree, but if that is the the stumbling point, if we can't hit, for example, council members for three months, I don't wanna put it off.
As long as information's shared through them.
Yes, you can still hold your
I mean, obviously, we're going through.
You need to make every effort to make it, and you can't just say, I'll make sure everybody feels better. Right. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need to make a motion on that, or?
No. It's a point.
All right. All right, so you're welcome to stay here again. Might want to stay next, we're talking about hazardous tree ordinance. Under General Business, next item is hazardous tree ordinance. As per council direction, the attached ordinance is created for your review. This language will be included in Chapter Six, which is our nuisance ordinance. The procedure that would, the procedure that will be followed is a complaint to the city, then an inspection by our Public Works City Forester and a third party, which would be an arborist. And if determined to be hazardous, letterally sent to the property owner asking that they remove the tree within thirty days. And if they fail to comply, the city would hire someone to remove the tree. This ordinance has been advertised as a proposed ordinance, and this will be the first reading of this ordinance. You want me to read through that?
That's it?
You want this ordinance read through?
Um, you know, just do, yeah, since we have people in the audience.
Ordinance of any Chapter Six, Public Nuisance Affecting Peace and Safety, Section Six, Ten Point Oh Four, Hazardous Trees, Sub One, Declaration. Any tree creating a public hazard, whether the tree is on public or private property, without regard to any damage to the tree and standing dead trees will be declared a public nuisance and shall be abated. Tree hazard includes dead or dying trees, dead parts of live trees, unstable live trees, new structural defects or factors that are within a striking distance of people or property. Hazard trees have the potential to cause property damage, personal injury, or fatality in the event of a failure. Sub Two, Enforcement Procedure. In order to protect the public, all hazard trees will be identified by a third party, along with the Public Works Department City Forester. If deemed hazardous, the tree will be marked with an orange X and must be removed within thirty days from the date printed on the notice to the property owner. The property owner must manage the removal of the tree or trees. Removal does not require the removal of the stump. If the property owner fails to remove a marked tree within specific specified timeframes. I got my tongue wrapped around my eye teeth, and I couldn't see what I was saying there. The city will manage the removal. The city will contract with a licensed and insured contractor for the removal of the tree. The property owner will be billed for removal and disposal costs incurred by the city. Failure to pay the bill will result in an assessment to the property owner as per Minnesota State statute. So, that's the reading. That's the first reading.
So, we have nothing, we don't have to do anything, add on that at all, right?
Um, you know, if you wanna have discussions, do you like the ordinance?
I like it, yeah, no, that sounds good to me.
Do you wanna kill it now, or do you wanna move forward?
Is this gonna have any effect on our, Section R, the pirate section in there, or are we gonna remove that, or are we still gonna have?
That'll still be there for other amendments, but this will be S, Section S, ordinance of trees.
We just want you all to consider the different ramifications that can come from it. Obviously, it lays out what we think is a good process to take care of it. But now it's dealing with private property and the inspection thereof. So, just be thoughtful of that as you're thinking about ideas, amendments, revisions, like Cheryl said.
Who's the Public Works City Forester?
Scott.
Scott Kirby is the one that's been in the classes and licensed. And just for your folks' information, this includes boulevard trees and stuff anyhow, 'cause if one of them starts dying, we gotta do something about that, too. No matter how that idea is up. I don't know. I I I I I can't understand, something's gotta be worked on, but I have a real I think that's a real problem, going in people's yards and what they can do with their property. To that extent.
But I mean, you're looking at it, it's to the point now where someone's saying, this tree is gonna fall on another person's house. And it shouldn't happen very often, and it shouldn't be, and in ordinance, it's gonna be abused, and we may, we need stronger language there, but it looks like, I mean, you need a third party, and no one's gonna say to take a tree down unless it's a diego.
You still got the opportunity to have your own insurance guy come up to you, look at it, it's his age now.
That's why you send a letter first, and then they have time to make it, decide what they wanna do.
Well, they probably followed this for two, three years.
We can show, I I'm guessing if their insurance guy came and showed that, you know, whatever, everything's covered, everything's fine, which I still don't, I don't know how that could ever happen, but they probably changed the opinions of the people that are making the decisions. It's just like, no different than going on somebody's property and mowing their grass or cleaning up a bunch of crap.
It's not that different. It's fifty bucks to mow grass, it's just a little more expensive to mow a tree.
Well, I mean.
I look at it, if you spend this money to take care of the the tree that's dying, how much money are you gonna save if it lands on someone's house, someone's house, or if it goes through someone's bedroom and kills them in their bed?
This is a very common, other towns carry the same policy, the same ordinance.
I took a lot of trees off houses in the last couple of days. I took a lot of trees off houses in the last couple of days. And insurance doesn't cover.
You don't need to tell me, I've had it through my roof, through my kitchen floor, or anything else.
But like on a neighbor's property, if the tree tips over onto somebody else's property, Minnesota laws that that you just acquired a tree.
Right.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's a mess. But you can, you know, with marked trees and dead ones, live ones are different sort of, it's acting on nature, but dead ones, the homeowners are gonna be liable.
But as a as an arborist, are you willing to go in and 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 take part of the tree? Like, we had a lady in here last time that says, everybody she's talked to says they won't take the part of the tree that's bothering her.
Well, it's, it it, I mean, every case is different, 'cause you can't, like, I'm not following what.
She's got, she's got a neighbor's got a couple of trees that are leaning her way, and she's
Ninety percent of trees that just go over her property.
Discussioned quite a lot with the neighbor about doing something about it, and he supposedly, basically told her, I wanna go ahead and take care of it. I'm not paying for it, he take care of it. She talked to a couple of people, and they said, we won't do it because it'll injure the tree if we take off what's hanging over here.
You can't, yeah, you couldn't do it if it was gonna cause.
Yeah, but you're gonna kill the tree anyhow, 'cause now we're gonna take the whole tree out.
Right, and you're better off taking the whole tree out. You know, that's what you have to, as an arborist, that's what I would suggest, is you'd have to have to remove the whole tree, you know, and then it lies on where the base of the tree is, you know, and all about the base, you know, it's where the base of the tree is.
You and I have been through this on the same property we're talking about right now.
We're talking about, yeah, but, yeah, so, but, you know, like a, just a single limb going out of somebody's house, it wouldn't be the it wouldn't be where the tree is, it'd be, it'd be where the limb was going over, you know, that property owner would be liable for that branch, you know. And same with, same with hollow trees, you know, a lot of people are like, well, hollow tree, there's a formula, there's an arborist formula that you use to see if a tree's actually still worth standing. You know, it's not just 'cause it's hollow, it's gotta go, you know, there's, and species, red oaks are terrible, but a burlap can be hollow, a twenty-one inch tree can be hollow now to two inches, and that's probably gonna stand forever.
Soft maples can be also hollow, they tip right over.
Yeah, they're gonna tip right over, so it's super tricky. Rochester has that, has the next ordinance, too, and now all of a sudden, you could, you could end up with a tree that you guys mark that is gonna potentially cost ten thousand dollars.
Yep.
And force somebody to remove it in thirty days.
Yep.
You know.
I know, that's what I'm talking about.
My bank account's no problem, but my wife's, she's not gonna pay for it.
This is a, this is a little different deal than a cleanup of a yard or a
Right, yeah, it's, you know, you could have a major, major expense.
Very, very expensive, very, very fast.
And to force them on that, but you also, I mean, you're, you're in a really tough spot with that ordinance. You know, it's not that big a deal on a small tree, but when you start talking about ash, ash is gonna be, you know, this, the landscape of Stormville's gonna change dramatically in the next couple of years. There's huge ash trees in people's backyards. When they die, they get really brittle and really, really dangerous.
And certain parts of town are gonna take a crane to lift over the hose and everything else to bring it up.
Yep, and that's a lot of money. Thousands of dollars, huh? So, you know, you could be forcing that on a homeowner to say you're you're in charge of twelve thousand dollars of removals.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm talking about.
Kinda kinda sounds like when we go through and put a new road down in front of your house, too, right?
Uh-huh.
Just like putting a new road in front of your house, and all of a sudden, one day you find out you gotta spend four thousand dollars on your
You've got ten years to pay that if you want to.
They're gonna be able to do the same thing with their tree, 'cause it was on their taxes, they're gonna give it ten years on this.
Well, what'll happen is they won't pay it, and then
Rochester expands that for diameters, you know, for like, if you have three trees that are thirty inch diameters, they, that thirty days goes to, I think, seventy days, seventy-five days. So, people can rob some banks to pay for it.
And we'll work with them on that, you know, as long as within thirty days they're addressing it, we will, you know.
Sometimes, but
It's always
Bit to say, you know, like you said.
Unfortunately, the more expensive trees you guys are talking about are the biggest, most dangerous ones, too.
But I'm gonna get hired to, and then would like to know your ordinance, 'cause they're gonna hire me to come and do it, and I'm gonna have to explain my, so.
That's, that was the first reading of that. You better be here for the second one, too.
Nothing about it for this stuff.
Well, if that's the first reading, Cheryl, do we need to add some more language about, uh, you know, wanna work with them a little bit, or not?
No, I think that's just
Okay.
Your direction to us, and
Okay.
Next, under General Business, will be two thousand nineteen project bonding. Now they're leaving. You wanna leave your card?
Wow, bullshitting about next December.
Staff is proposing to utilize bonding dollars for a portion of the current two thousand nineteen CIP project, which will have a share in financing the project, along with the six in the street water and sewer funds, and then, of course, to assess the portion of funding. This will give the city the flexibility in covering all costs for this project while not exhausting our reserve dollars, as we've already looking ahead to preserving some of that for our future CIP. Projects, and of course, for emergencies and current operational needs. The city has utilized bonding in the past and is working with city's financial advisors, Paul Donahue and Bonding Councilwoman Morgan Mary Hippel, in putting together this proposed package and recommendation, along with our city elders helping with guidance. The attached proposed parameter resolution will initiate this process. Final approvals for the actual bonding will still be forthcoming for your review and consideration as the project progresses, and the final funding recommendations are put in place. Council action requests us to approve or deny the resolution two thousand nineteen dash sixteen, a resolution including the issuance of general obligation utility revenue bond series two thousand nineteen. Discussion, guys? Anything, Bill?
Yeah, bonds are nothing new for our city. We've done them on past CIPs. The last couple we've lucked out, 'cause we've been able to use savings forms, but now we're back at, we're gonna have to do some borrowing, especially in light of the next two years worth of projects, so it's just to allow us some breathing room. This just starts the process. You'll get the actual kind of funding information at a future meeting, so.
We have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
A second.
Second. On fair side, opposed, that carries on state county road requests. Transfer of County Road one oh six southeast and County Road one twenty northeast. As you know from our spring council workshop, the mayor and I have been working with the county and township, and if you're already also aware, the county is proposing a transfer of a portion of County one twenty east-west section of twentieth street northeast from US sixty-three to fifteenth avenue northeast, and provide us with an upfront maintenance allowance of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. They are also proposing to transfer a portion of County one oh six, the east-west section of sixth street southeast from US sixty-three basketball to High Force Line, which is by the church out there, and provide us with an upfront maintenance allowance of two hundred and twenty-five thousand. All three roadway areas are highlighted on the attached map. The thought would then be that some of these dollars could be used for joint efforts and finding a way to work together in a possible joint project with any or all the adjacent jurisdictions in an effort with the rights and funding for the paving reconstruction of fifteenth avenue northeast, northeast, which has an estimated cost of three hundred and fifty, four hundred and fifty thousand, and has also been requested by many city residents. The mayor and staff are hopeful that some possible joint effort ideas can be worked on to facilitate this. Hopefully, some of the future maintenance dollars could be utilized in helping with the maintenance of all three roadway areas. At the current time, staff is thinking that the one oh six transfer can probably be workable, but we're a little hesitant, pending some additional research and future state aid funding on the one twenty portion, since that will now involve a bridge to go with and half of six in the township, which is why we're also hopeful that township will help play an active role or be a participant in working together with those in the county. Since the county has set aside some two thousand nineteen designated funds for this transfer, is desiring some further directions from the city, the two agreements are being presented for your review and action. So, council action requests us to approve or deny County Road one oh six southeast transfer and enter into agreement with home state county. That'll be the first motion. Do we have a motion to do that?
Are we comfortable on the the payment amount of this, on one oh six?
That's about as low as
You're not happy with one oh six either? I'm asking staff.
You need to look at the life of the road that was there, but we're towards the end of life on that road. That road is not that far off, we need something.
Well, I thought that's, I thought they went on to do a lot about that. Are they just leaving that up to us, or what? Is this just, they just plan, said that's all we're giving you on that one?
That's what their audit amount is supposed to represent.
Engineer, Ken, what do you think?
Yeah, I started to look at this a year ago, and I was asked to stop, um, but I'm doubtful if that amount would cover full millennial relay for the roadway for you.
And how many years do you think there are left on that road?
It's gonna be a need of one fairly soon, a millennial relay. Our normal approach would actually, to look at the utilities, too, though, and see if it needs to be rebuilt in the underlying utilities before we'd put money into that. The one thing you do need to look at also is your MSAS funding, um, and that's a little more complicated. The way MSAS works.
Isn't that gonna help us on that one, you know, sixty-three to thirty?
That one does help you, yes. Um, so, one oh six does help you. It does not, so MSAS funding, we, what we do is we calculate how many miles are within city limits that you are owners to, basically, or authorities of. Twenty percent of all of your miles can be applicable for and to be put on to routes that are MSAS allowable routes. Um, one oh six from sixty-three to fifth, since it's currently a CASA, and it's a CASA turnback, that portion of the roadway does not, um, get added to your mileage, but one hundred percent of it is applicable to MSAS funds without deducting from your twenty percent. The rest from fifth going east, that's part of added to your mileage, and only twenty percent is applicable, but that route can't be added to your MSAS route because of the rules that it has to start and end at another state-funded roadway. So, um, so one hundred percent of that roadway does not get fundings back, um, if that makes sense, so.
As far as the roadway, they don't take, they're just talking, you black that portion. Urban gutter is considered ours.
Right.
And the underground.
Underground's considered yours. Storm sewer should be considered partially theirs. Mm-hmm. Underground's considered yours. Storm sewer should be considered partially theirs. They had to deal with their storm sewer because you put in. Curbing gutter though, the type of storm sewer that's theirs, what's there, so they had to manage, you know, they have to manage this, this sort, the sewer model in some way. Um, but just looking at asphalt prices and everything right now, I mean, um. You might be close to a millon overlay on what they're offering you, but you're taking on this roadway for life.
Now, the next question is, uh, they can't just give it to us too anyhow, can they? Just say it's yours now, we're out, taking care of it.
Um, so the county is capable of, um, yeah, of turning over a roadway within your city limits. Uh, by state statute, they're able to do that.
Without giving us two hundred and twenty-five thousand is what I'm saying.
Uh, well, there's been many lawsuits between cities and counties or counties and state and state and cities. Um, because the statute does read that it has to be an agreeable amount to maintain that road. Um, so it's supposed to be.
They pretty strongly agree to this amount.
I'm sure they did.
Discussion.
I'm sure they did.
This is their amount, and they've also let us know lately that, remember, this is only for two thousand nineteen. This isn't in the budget for next year.
Okay.
They're hanging that one in the air now.
So, um, things within city limits, they do have the ability to turn over to you. Um, what you want, if you wanna fight it or not, you know, I could, can look at. What a millon overlay would exactly cost on our budgeting, uh, the bid prices we get around here. Um, versus what they get for milling an overlay miles upon miles, um, things like that. We could look at that, um.
Now, so council understands milling overlay is, they only take off the top two inches or so.
We'd probably, we'd, actually, we'd be taking off along the sides, um, about an inch and a half to two inches, taper it down in six feet and then just scarify the middle and put two inches new on top. All of the cracks that you see out there will come back and within a couple of years. Um, we aren't talking about, we won't see them for ten to twenty years. We'll see them in a couple of years.
A proper fix is what they're doing on County Road thirty-five out here past the bowling alley, which is a reclaim, which is they mill all the way through the blacktop and into the gravel, use that for a base and then build that up on top.
So, um, and that you would do, you know, definitely if you weren't dealing with the utilities. Um, you could do, you know, we do reclaim and repave, but then we haul all that reclaim off because we're replacing all the utilities. So that's a whole other cost factor, um, from the city side of things, but they are responsible only for the actual pavement that they're giving us. Um, in regards to one twenty, that is not in your jurisdiction completely. It's not within city limits completely.
No, that was not.
They could not force that one out.
Well, the force of the road on you, it's kind of, makes me wanna think, lean more towards taking money and run with it. But I, twentieth street one, is that what it is? No.
It's twentieth street to us, yes.
So, right, so that one, I, no way can we say yes to that with the bridge and when we're deciding if fully our jurisdiction and two hundred and eighty thousand, I, that to me doesn't. I mean, I'd love to get fifteenth avenue paved tomorrow, but.
So, um, thinking about the bridge, just so you know, um, bridges now require inspections.
That would be on our dime.
Every two years.
What, huh?
Every two years.
Holy balls.
On your dime. Um, a bridge inspection is, I'll range it between three to five thousand dollars.
Plus about the five.
Plus whatever you need to fix.
What if we get them to, tell me this, run this number, Greg. What if we get them to pay fifteen, give it to us? Can we connect all that NSA all the way around from thirty all the way to sixty-three on one twenty?
You wouldn't have enough mileage?
Wouldn't have enough mileage?
No, we'd have.
That has new mileage.
So only twenty percent of it, fifteen, uh, would be allowable as.
Then but fifteen of one twenty then too if we took it all over, right? Or twenty percent of that.
And twenty percent of that, um, so. We do have just under or around, let's see, four tenths of a mile that we need to apply to some roads. Um, and we have talked about taking some roads off of the, um, the MSAS assignment in order to incorporate different roads. Um, what we want to incorporate and have assigned be roads for MSAS assignment is our roads that we own that have the highest traffic. Um, that is how it calculates to the biggest percentage of the pot that the legislature then assigns to get distributed. Um, we have some places where it's assigned to roads that aren't even built, so they are drawing nothing and we want to take those off. Um, but I don't believe we'll have enough miles to place that whole route on the MSAS. Um, one possible suggestion of getting fifteenth paved is to try to fight for federal dollars. Um, and the county has some say in who gets federal dollars.
Who gets it? DMC?
Uh, no, uh, well, ROCAG gets a portion of the allotment, so, um, and they get to sign, assign what projects get awarded money.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so since we are within Homestead County, we have to fight with ROCAG of who gets that money, um.
Well, I guess right now they answer a lot from staff. Looks like neither one of you are comfortable with either one of these numbers.
I, I do remember last year that Jenna was asked to figure out, I, I don't, we don't, I don't know. I don't build roads for a living. Uh, we can get an idea, but I think for you guys making a firm decision, we should look at what.
What it costs. I think we know what it costs.
How long are they gonna give us on this building, they say? I mean, they're the ones hanging that carrot out there.
Yeah, well, commissioners seem to think that if we don't make a decision here, then they're gonna use it elsewhere. No, 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 not today. But they're, if it's not gonna get used, they'll start using it elsewhere where they need it. And then when we had that work or, uh, when we met with them a couple of times, we were trying to look at how far out. I mean, our own projects are five, six years out yet before we could even think of putting this on it. So it was when you guys say soon, are you saying next year soon or ten years soon, you know, that kind of.
That's one of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Best guess, five years?
I mean, would that be next on the rotation after Berg?
It, well, we never really looked at it because it wasn't our road.
Right.
Now, if they can push it off on us and this is all the best they're gonna give, I don't know how that part works, but one thing they talked about us was they figured they looked at the life of the road and that's the cost for the life of the road that was there. I would rather see a firm number to feel comfortable myself.
Um, and this bargaining that they are saying, well, you can just take this money and go pay a fifteenth for it, well, then you're out the money to maintain these two roads that you took on. So that's not a fair adjustment or saying, hey, we're giving you this money and now go do what you want with it. But you need that money for your maintenance of these two roads, um, so it doesn't.
That was their suggestion. That wasn't my suggestion.
Right, it doesn't.
I gave somebody that money, but they.
It, it doesn't actually help you with fifteens, in other words, um, it gives you more responsibility.
Right.
Um, but if.
I just shouldn't say give one twenty to the township, let them handle it. Well, we need a motion to do, uh, do here.
I say let Jenna give us some prices for sure on County Road one oh six. I mean, has the township talked to anybody? Have we heard from the township on County Road one twenty?
They.
Yeah, they've been pretty hesitant just on chipping in on fifteen, so I doubt they'll jump in the chance to take any additional.
One oh six is the main one that needs to be dealt with in time.
Right, because that's got the other dollar and everything else.
But is one twenty in ranked? I mean, is that, we, we already take this.
You can see a map on the map here.
So is this all annexed in then or?
No, this is, that's all I see.
So what's gonna happen is to take that road over.
Well, we gotta maintain.
No, I don't have to, nothing, that's why I'll get annexed in then.
And that's additionally, you can't take on a road and you can't apply it to your MSAS mileage unless it's within your city boundaries. So you will have to annex in those roadways.
The roadway.
Just the roadway ways.
He's asking about the property.
But you're, the roadways.
But we could also annex in, if we ever did do anything on the twentieth street one, we could annex in onto fifteenth avenue, just the roadway, couldn't we?
Yep.
I know in Rochester, it's city Rochester, I mean.
Like the east circle, west circle drive area.
What's that?
Yeah, like those east circle, west circle drive area.
Yeah, even like fortieth street to county eight, uh, southwest or forty eighth street, forty eighth street. Cause we get sent to crashes there if they're in the ditch and if it's out in the field, it's county, but the city in the ditch or the road in the ditch is city.
Action, guys?
I'd like to table for a meeting or two to see if Jenna can come back with a, any idea on prices.
Is that a motion? No, I wouldn't table it. I would just ask her, or do a motion for her to come back and then we'll bring it back on my, on the next week. When you table something, you have to say what day you're tabled. We don't know if she can get that done, so.
You'll have a meeting or two to work with. They're just trying to look before like, I think, fall gets here because then they'll.
And then were you gonna deny one twenty or are you gonna wait on that too?
You making a motion? Do you want Jenna to bring back numbers on both of them or?
Well, I thought for sure County Road one oh six.
What price do we want Jenna to look at? I would recommend a reclaim is what we should be looking, cause that road has been overlaid and it's.
I was thinking reclaim because.
Full reclaim and repave.
So you're gonna pass it on.
Mm-hmm. It's truck road, you're six inches of blacktop, so it's the more expensive road.
That's my motion. Look at a reclaim.
On one oh six.
On County Road one oh six.
Oh, motion, do we have, you got two seconds.
No, you don't have to. You can do it all in one if you're gonna deny one twenty or what are you gonna do? I mean, that's what I, you're not there.
Deny it at that price? If we deny, if we deny it at that price, Administrator Schimmel. I said if we deny it at that price, are we done with it or do we still get to talk to them about it? One twenty.
Well, you can deny your proposal and make them back at any time.
You can propose something back to them, um.
Yeah, I think what we do with you, if this estimate comes back, give it a try.
My motion is to deny County Road one twenty.
Second?
At this time.
One oh six, we'll do it. We'll look for Jenna, give us some money.
Reclaim, reclaim and repave.
And deny one twenty.
And deny one twenty at this time.
Second?
Second.
We got a second, Jenna. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. All right, next item. Extension of hours, part-time mower for custodial cleaning. Due to continued growth of city responsibilities. That has followed the earlier meetings that the personnel committee head of public work staff is being recommended to utilize one of our mowers for some additional part-time assistance. He would be responsible for the custodial cleaning of the library, city hall and the civic center. This will free up approximately an average of four hours a day that we can utilize the current employee in various public work areas that have been seeing the need for additional labor. This will be reviewed during the last quarter for further consideration as well as possibly including additional reorganization to include mechanic supervisor position. That is already a part of the future organizational chart for the public works department. To approve or deny the temporary extension of a part-time mower for September through December of two thousand nineteen. Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Only question I had was on this is, I thought that was set by the union, that they can only be there so long.
We're working with them.
Okay.
And so we've got that presented to them. We'll make sure they work with us.
We're not, we're not laying anybody off to create, to do this.
That's their.
So we can subcontract out, uh, and you can have part timers. If they run into that sixty-seven day rule, it can run into where you have to supply the benefits for them. So that part could come into effect if that's what they want them to do. It'd be basically, you'd be hiring a halftime person, but you have to supply halftime benefits for that person if it runs into the sixty-seven day rule.
Any other questions or discussion? We have a motion and a second on that, didn't we? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next one is city parcel land sale TV industrial park. With the research being completed on the recently donated parcel land across the street into the east of the community gardens and the TV industrial park, staff is now recommending that this parcel can be advertised for sale for future economic development uses. Barden most recently advertised it for sale with no approvals by them being granted, thus the donation to the city at the end of last year. The most recent county assessed value that we have shown on the five point eight six acre parcel. Has been four hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred dollars. The lot is unique in nature with substantial swale in the middle of it, so thus the city being okay and open to offers. Staff has recommended the acceptance of offers which will not only show a fair value for the city, but would also take into consideration the proposed utilization of the property that would be in the best interest of the TV parking community. Motion to approve or deny advertising this land for sale.
I'll make a motion.
You don't have to, that piece is, okay?
Yep.
Should be in that.
Make some motion. Do we have a second?
Second. Second.
Questions, discussion? Hearing none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Now, next item under general business is liquor laces transfer. Uncle Monty's is requesting to utilize Minnesota statute three forty-eight dot four oh four sub dot four to sell intoxicated liquor at the civic center on August thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Where's, what is that?
Uncle Monty's is, uh, in Haight.
Haightfield.
Council action requested authors Uncle Monty's to utilize Minnesota statute three forty-eight dot four oh four sub four to sell intoxicated liquor at the civic center on August thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, subject to all proper application. Motion?
So.
Should I go with it, Ken?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next one. County Road thirty-five, tenth street northwest, traffic study. As per the city's request, the city's speed limit of County Road thirty-five, tenth street northwest, the study was completed and as Mid-Dots recommendation in Homestead County concurs that the speeds stay the same. Forty-five miles per hour between the intersection of highway sixty-three and a point approximately twenty-one hundred feet west of that intersection and then fifty-five miles per hour or whatever the limit is. That you don't get caught at by anybody, between all, between approximately twenty-one hundred feet west of sixty-three intersection and the intersection of County Road eight. No actions required by the council. Hear that out?
Way too fast.
They did their best.
Now, people are gonna be in such a hurry to see your tunnel because they wanna get out there as fast as they can.
Next one under general business is bid for two thousand six Pierce dash one hundred foot platform fire truck. As discussed at previous meetings, members of the fire department looked at the above described fire truck in Starksville, Mississippi. The truck committee is seeking approval to submit a bid not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand if the city of Starksville approves accepting bids at the next council meeting. Council action requested is to approve submitting a bid for the two thousand six Pierce dash one hundred foot platform fire truck not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
We can save money on the repainting, I guess, because we can keep the S T for Starkville on the front of the fire department.
Yeah.
And the Ville at the back, squeeze in.
Stirt and you go, just about got it. Now, when they sent the picture, I was like, oh my gosh, they set it up for us, you know? And I was like, what's a skirt Ville today? Um, yeah, if you remember from the workshop, you know, they thought they might need, you know, the two fifty and then maybe about thirty thousand for potential refurbishment. Um, after the committee reviewed it, they said those, that price range is good. They're obviously gonna try, um, a bid under that. But they needed some flexibility from you in case they, I think, get into a counter bid situation or, um, uh, need a little. but they needed some flexibility from you in case they, I think, get into a counter bid situation or, um, uh, need a little extra.
And I believe we discussed at previous meetings about the two hundred and fifty thousand was acceptable, and then we also told them they could possibly do as much as thirty thousand on refurbishment.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions?
And then the other quick handout is Paul Donah did at least three different options that will work with the fire department on and how finance it. Technically, the money's there today to do it all, but we may want some flexibility due to other needs they might have over the next three, five years, whatever.
We have a motion and a second to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That takes us on to mayor's staff and assault reports. Mayor's report tonight is, city of Sterkville would like to send their deepest sympathies out to the family of Marya Quezzi. And a happy, happy ninetieth birthday of Millie Peterson, the owner's mom, number one. The community band will hold their final concert on August sixth at Zion at six thirty. We want to thank them for their summer concert series, we hope they'll be back in the new amphitheater next year for a few concerts there. A big thank you to the United Methodist Church for sponsoring Storm again for the third year. The kids do a fantastic job in our community helping out our residents that need a little extra hand. Thank you for that. City administrators report.
Uh, reports in your packet, and I think all the items pending, we have tonight, so you're good to go for me for now.
Alright, any questions for the administrator? Yeah, thank you, Bill, finance director, Bill. You have a report for us there?
For which one?
Finance.
Um, just some good news right at the moment. Um, we talked to the county, and it looks like, um, our valuations for our community are up on at least four million dollars, which that helps us when we're analyzing whatever our final budget will be and what the tax impact will be. And then, um, the LGA, um, has come in, and so now it's looking like it's closer to sixty-eight thousand. There'll be additional funding for us, uh, for next year.
What did we get this year?
Pardon?
What was it, what was it prior, prior to that?
Um, sixty was what was proposed, but now the final numbers look to be sixty-eight, which is good. And it was so pending through the legislative session, a lot of them were pushing for it, but it wasn't for sure, and now it became law, so. That should help us out, uh, when we, um, go through our budget now this fall. And again, uh, staff's putting together their stuff. Again, I just reminded you, if you got projects you wanna think about this, no, because, um, Paul and Andrew are helping me do the analysis here, uh, so we can get the, uh, but the, uh, department heads are doing their worksheets. So, if there's something over and above citizens to ask about, or you want, uh, you want to budget, we'll be good. We're funneling into our good old finance committee.
That Greg had a question about-
But, yeah, I was just gonna say interviews are on Monday, right?
Yep, yep, so all of them are that, uh, that timeframe, so hopefully four o'clock works, we'll do them probably every forty-five minutes.
Alright, thank you, public works, Sean?
Uh, reports in there, uh, give me a note, a little bit on the amphitheater, because I know people are wondering about that. Uh, we met with Les Radcliffe today to go over some pointers and doing things. We are gonna get a packet sent out, hopefully at the end of this week, for bids, and we are going to give them the timeframe of a couple of weeks to get the bids back in, in the hopes of getting some action going, uh, and get some stuff turned this fall. So, we have good news.
So, you're gonna be our general manager, or the guy director, or the main guy?
Yeah.
We should be able to bring those bids to on August twenty-seventh.
In order for us to try and get some of the in-kind, we're hoping to get, it's too hard to do that through a general contractor, so we will general contract it ourselves and then go to subs on each. And then the city, we will, our guys will be some, doing some of that, I don't even think we'll submit the, uh, the landscaping, the, and the seating and stuff like that, we'll just take care of that ourselves, trying to keep the cost down. And that's how they broke it down for us, uh, the thing they asked to pull it out for us to, to do it that way, at our request.
When we do our great big projects, we then also require a performance bond, payment bond situation. Well, in lieu of that, since we're hoping there could maybe be in-kind or donations or to help strengthen those councils on those quotes, we're suggesting that that requirement could be left off. Each of the categories aren't that great, because right now the overall projects is hoped for in that hundred and fifty thousand dollar range, rather than a million. And then there's so much infrastructure with those projects, this is a pretty self-explanatory thing, so we're hopefully agree with our recommendation on trying that out. Uh, with local bidders, you gotta hope they're gonna give us, um, a good deal, it's for the community, and it's, it's been shown out there. And then we also have sent it off to the Rochester Area Builders Association, because they said they would take a look at it just to see if any portions of it they'd be willing to pick up or help us out of. So, we're really hoping the community comes together with the different packets, uh, that we're dividing out, and the pricing comes in good, so.
The risk would just be, mostly be tiny. If we get, you know, someone drags their feet, we aren't out because we haven't paid them until they've completed their work. It's just a matter of, this could get dragged down, worst case scenario, we wouldn't have it till fourth next year yet, which we'd have to put a temporary stage up someplace, and, and we'd work around if we had to.
And corrupt.
That's just kind of the worst case scenario.
And we've already told the chamber, so they understand that if it's done, great, if not, we've got some backup plans already in place for Amont at Bear Cave, uh, to get that totally set up, um, in a similar fashion to what we've seen.
Any other questions, Chris?
If anybody asks any questions at this point, I'm gonna kick.
You guys have done a fantastic job before, all year long.
Thank you.
Reports, water reports in your packet? City engineers report?
Uh, work just keeps going on, um, down on the CIP project, so, and we will have a public hearing at your next meeting.
Alright.
Poor Nate's been waiting patiently.
I wanted to know how great this is.
Report, Nate.
The, I would like to thank the city council for pulling me out of family karaoke night at the library. It's been a pleasure to be here with you tonight. You have my report, uh, if there are any questions, um, summer keeps ticking by, and, uh, I think we're doing, things are going pretty well at the library.
Things are ticking by. Things are going well over there, David?
Yep, um, we are, um, I, I still owe Bill a, a budget worksheet, which will be done by the end of the week, but, um, otherwise, um, we've been weeding the nonfiction collection, um, kind of paring it down, getting rid of some of the, yeah, uh, older disused stuff. I have an eleven-page, seven-point font report of books in our collection that haven't been circulated in ten years or more, so kind of going through those and saying goodbye. Also, trying to figure out, you know, where the collection needs to go from here, so, yeah, it's going well. And the programs are great, I mean, like, uh, the Minnesota Zoommobile, two hundred and fifty people showing up for that, that's a bigger library program. Yeah, than I've ever been associated with, so that was totally, totally awesome.
Alright, any other questions? Who wants to get kicked? Alright, thank you, Nate. Fire chiefs not here, committee commission board reports, chamber of commerce, EDAHRA, message wire in the packet, finance. We'll be looking at the-
Interviews on Monday?
Yep.
Library?
No.
No?
I mean, next, next month.
Alright, park board?
No report.
Personnel?
Just what you saw in the packet, and then just seeing the moment during the course of the quarter here, Sean and I will be working on that org chart just to see if changes, what the union brought up to our personnel committee, uh, through the course of a couple of meetings over the last couple of months. And so that probably will be something to see proposed in next year's budget.
P and Z?
Me, next one.
Public safety, national night out is August sixth. Everybody have a good time, if you've got anybody registered yet, do you know?
Yeah.
Public works? Ready?
I didn't report it this month.
ROCOG.
No, same.
Two one eighty. Transit advisory committee?
They're working on the next meeting being in August, so.
Communications, we got the SEMLM meetings July thirtieth at Red Wing, SEMLM Connecting Communities Conference coming up, and RTCC, Regional Transportation Council, meeting notice. Let, uh, anybody know if you wanna go down those meetings. Open mic, city council welcomes and encourages participation with community members. If you want to talk, you got four minutes, we probably won't do anything about it tonight, step up and podium statement, name and address.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, carries.